I'm Terry Anteen, one of our students.
All right, very good. And this is for 10th grade reading last year, and we want to congratulate you guys because that's a tough one. All right, thank you guys.
No, thank you Derek, can you come back please sir? You are a senior, you'll be graduating Saturday, please share where you're going to school sir, and what your major will be.
All right. Good afternoon guys, I'm Derek Martinez, and I will be attending Washburn University next academic year, and I plan on majoring in either finance or education.
All right. [applause] We're excited to have Mr. Martinez, another future teacher who's majored in education. We're so excited about that. All right, with that, and Mr. Martinez will be called up again a little bit later. We're going to continue with those challenges, and she just talked about last year, people making the challenge who were a high free lunch. And so this year, last year, all of our, on average, our schools in elementary, middle, and high increased across the board. That was the first time our data assessment director, Mr. Kip, shared in 16 years that every level increased. So we know we have a system that's in place. The real proof is, cannot continue the second year. So now we're in year two, and on average around, based on preliminary scores, 3 to 4 percent increase in elementary, middle, we're still awaiting the final results for high school, but based on preliminary results, we have some pretty significant gains, and you'll be hearing about that later in the presentation. So on with the challenges, Mrs. Kruger or a staff member will need to come up and assist with, we have so many schools, with handing these out. She has to take pictures, she came up with the camera too.
I can do it all.
You can do it all? I have a good team, you can do it all. All right, with that, Ms. Wallace, I should've called you one up, our assistant superintendent. And that way we can share this piece. You want to call schools, and then do a little, so I'll put them up here. Williams Elementary. Any principals and staff? All right, that's Ms. Berber at Williams Elementary, and Ms. Berber's in her second or third year?
Second.
Second year having these kinds of improvements. Ms. Berber, don't go too far, the end will be taking a big picture, but you can just stay sort of by the can of marrow, people improve. All right. Our next school, Winston Elementary, Mrs. Pierce. I just called you Berber, Ms. Pierce. Congratulations, Ms. Pierce. Ms. Pierce improved in both math and English, as did Ms. Berber. Ms. Berber had almost, almost 30 percent of her students move out of level one, in addition to having a big jump into the top two levels, pretty exceptional. And now our next school, Lomen Hill. Miss Lomen, our administrative level, will be joining the Lomen Hill team, congratulations. Also increased in reading and in math, as did the majority of the schools that I will be reading. Our next award goes to our National School of Character, Dr. Gordon and team, come on down. Awarded in 2017 as the National School of Character, and now both again, reading and And administrators, you can just stand in the middle and let them admire how great you look. All right. Now we're at McCarter Elementary, Ms. Cooney and team. And Ms. Cooney's school, now get this, increased approximately 20 percent. She has outscored probably everybody in the state, literally, because she was already outscoring many in the state last year. And so when you think of 20 percent, and if you're in the 30s or 40s, they are truly rock stars, let's give them another applause. Our next school is Highland Park Central. Dr. Mejia, who got her doctorate this year, is in her first year at Highland Park Central, congratulations, first year principal. Both reading and math. The next school is Meadows Elementary, Ms. Johnston and team. Ms. Norton will be the new principal at Sheldon, and Ms. Norton has been at Meadows for about five years. Two years, I just gave her three more years. She was there last year, she was there this year when the scores jumped, that's the important part. The next school, this is another school that based on preliminary results, you're talking almost a 20 percent jump, outscoring probably most if not all in the state, McKeckren Elementary And you brought students? And he brought a flag. A McKeckren flag.
We brought a flag too.
Leave it to Mr. Williams to bring the flag. Let's give them another applause. Our next school is our lead principal, Mrs. Sarah Sharp from State Street Elementary and team, come on down. Ms. Amanda Broyles will be the principal next year at State Street, as Mrs. Sharp moves into the Director of Elementary and Early Childhood. The next award goes to Dr. Gray and team from Randolph Elementary. Dr. Gray and team, are you in the audience? Oh, and back up, is his current assistant principal, will be a principal, see now you can see why these assistant principals are moving up. So Dr. Gray's assistant principal, Ms. Wells Martin, congratulations. Our next award goes to just a lovely lady, who has been in her school for many years, Ms. Liata Quincy Elementary and team. Team, team, get out of that seat, come on up, come on, come on, come on. And we're gonna take one big picture at the end, but... Our next school, this is again, pretty remarkable, in her first year, Mrs. Blevins and team from Ross Elementary. Our next school, and you just heard this school, our six-time award winner, Scott Dual Language and team, students come on up and staff. And students, if you don't want to stand, you don't have to, but you can stand up here for another five minutes or so. Next school is Stout Elementary, Mr. Lifton, who is the reading guru in the district. He has an unbelievable book on, he's good. Mr. Lifton also had a significant jump last year, and for a second year in a row, both reading and math, congratulations, Mr. Lifton. The next school, Robinson Middle School, Mrs. Hazelton and team, come on up. Mrs. Hazelton has so many activities going on at Robinson, but her, I was in sixth grade in particular, she has had so many acknowledgements for them, this jump, they have just been working tirelessly, again, great job, Mrs. Hazelton. Our next school, we are now at our middle schools, so let's give another applause for our elementary schools. Do you want the elementary schools, or do you want me to just keep going all the way through middle?
At this point, we might as well just keep on going.
Keep it rolling. Our next school is Landon Middle School, Mr. Boggs and team. Our next school is French Middle School, she is our lead principal, Ms. Kelly Hoffman and team. Ms. Hoffman had a significant jump last year, won a challenge award this year, and both of these ladies, principal and vice principal, are the Kansas nominees of the year for principal and vice principal, that doesn't normally happen in the same school, we congratulate Our next school is Eisenhower Middle, Ms. Giardina's in her second year as a principal. It was one of our lowest performing schools, until Ms. Eisenhower Giardina stepped on the scene, and this year, both reading and math, congratulations, Ms. Giardina. Our next school is Chase Middle School, and I believe Ms. Norman needed to send a representative this evening, well, our representative, and so, Mrs. Amanda Broyles, she actually is vice principal both at State Street and at Chase, and the wonderful thing, this is Mrs. Norman's first year at Chase, and Mrs. Broyles' first year as assistant principal, congratulations. And our next school, this school improved tremendously last year, this year received a challenge award, and as results continue to come in, this school has also, most recently, won the Governor's $100,000 Fitness Award. Mr. Hare, please come on down, let's give Mr. Hare a minute. All right, we will be taking one large photo with all of our staff members, and we want them to sit and come back up, or we want to leave them up here for a minute and have the board members, I think that's a good idea, just leave them up here for a minute?
You have to understand.
All right, board members, perhaps we should take this photo at this time, just because it's so many, it's every... If the principals that are still here, you can take another picture in five minutes, we can't leave anybody out. Ms. Soper at Jardine Elementary. It is her first year there, second year as principal, and she performed exceptionally well. As we continue, we have a few more awards, so we want to go ahead and get through those as well. This is the time for graduation, and with our graduations, we also have adults that are graduating. With our K-State Leadership Program members, please come forward with your degrees, we have a K-State program that meets here. Ms. Billy Wallace is the adjunct professor for that, would you like to come and join the group, Ms. Billy Wallace? As if I have to say your whole name, come on up. 14 or 15?
14.
14 graduates, as a result of meeting here once a week for two years, this is the K-State cohort. Ms. Wallace is going to introduce the two people from K-State that also come and lead this piece, and then we will go ahead and give them an applause, they all have their graduation on Friday. So these are the new leaders moving forward in, either in Topeka or beyond, so let's give them an applause. At this time, we would like to recognize our student interns, and I'm gonna read a piece, but this really has been made possible largely due to our deputy superintendent, Mr. Larry Robbins, he's pretty much said, you all kind of speak to this, but Mr. Larry Robbins, our deputy superintendent, has been negotiating opportunities for students to intern throughout Topeka. So as I read through this piece, then I will go ahead and begin to award these new student interns. We have a number of internships that are provided to students across the district. Tonight, we wanted to recognize a few of those partnerships that are new and unique opportunities for our students. First, we want to recognize the very first one, Lair Noler Ford, which is right next door, so if you need a car, you just go over there, because you know that he is supporting our kids, for a new internship program. They've partnered with TPS on through Mr. Robbins. We currently have two students, when I call these students, if you are in the audience, please come forward, and if a representative from Ford is in the audience, please come forward as well. These students are Damian Delgado and Chester Russell, who are interning in the Service Department as part of the Autotech Program. Stay around for two minutes, because we'll take a photo at the end of this, but, and Chester Russell is not here right now?
No, that's Chester.
You are Chester, why gave you Mr. Delgato? But we'll fix that before you leave, okay, while you're still here. Thank you for speaking up on that one, that you were gonna be Mr. Delgato. With that, know that our students in the program are actually working tonight, some of them are not able to be with us, as well as the representatives from Ford were not able to be here tonight due to a prior commitment, but we congratulate both students, and we'll be calling you back up in a couple of minutes to take another photo, okay? Let's give them another applause. And these next awards, Advisors Excel, is our representative from Advisors Excel here with us this evening. They've been a wonderful partner to TPS, and they continue to expand upon that partnership with a new internship program for high school students, again, thank you to Mr. Robbins. Derek Martinez Regada, please come forward, of Highland Park, is planning to attend Washburn University and major in, you said finance, our finance person said that, but we know it may be very well education. And he'll have this opportunity through Advisors Excel for a paid internship to learn about finance through Advisors Excel. And then our final award, Mr. Woods, would you like to come forward? This is a Westar Energy Long Standing Partnership Award for an internship as well. I'm gonna read what the award is, and then Mr. Woods, he didn't even know he was coming up, he said, "All right." We have something new called Communities in the Classroom, and when our communities step up, they've been stepping up for many years, as, but step up and continue to give new internships, we gotta take time to acknowledge that, and encourage others to do the same. Westar Energy has been a longstanding partner with the district through a variety of means. This year, Caitlin Farrar is the fourth student we have placed in their Fleet Management Program, and the first female to earn a spot in the program. Caitlin did have a family engagement, oh, and I called you all the way up, and is not able to be here tonight, but she has already started her internship. Any comment you want to make, Mr. Woods, before we go on to the next item?
Well, you know, this is an exciting partnership again, I mean, a lot of credit needs to go to Mr. Robbins, our deputy superintendent, but for us at Westar, this is a, it's not all 100 percent altruistic, these are really smart, talented kids, and we are in a company where 50 percent of our folks are going to be eligible for retirement in the next five to 10 years, that's 2,400 people, so 1,200 or so of the, you know, folks will be jumping off a metaphorical ship in the next decade, so capturing some of this talent, like Caitlin, who already, from what I understand, already has about 15 new dads. And is beloved already, in just a week and a half of working, so, thank you to the district and to you, to the administration, and to my fellow board members for their support in this kind of partnership for our students.
Now for our, oh, did you want to come on up?
I'm supposed to get, it reminds me, I guess one of the...
Oh, that's right, one goes to your company and one goes to Caitlin. And at this time, Mr. Robbins, did you want to come up and say some words for National Police Week? We are excited, because we have one of the best police forces anywhere, not only because of the support they give, but the character in these men and women is exceptional. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Robbins, who supervises them, and then we'll begin with our recognition.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. As Dr. Anderson said, we do have a very talented and a professional police force that serves Topeka Public Schools, and we're fortunate to be in that area, and, you know, it's all because of the person who we have as the chief of that police force, and that's Chief Ron Brown. We just spoke about Chief Brown not too long ago at the Distinguished Staff Award Ceremony. Chief Brown came through us, came to us rather from the Topeka Police Department, retired as a major, has come here and really built a professional group of law enforcement officers. They serve very diligently, they work not only to provide safety and security in our schools, but also to provide a proper example for our students that they interact with each and every day, so, Chief Brown, if you will, why don't you come up, so you can introduce each one of your officers, and we can certainly thank them for their service.
Well, sir, coming forward, Mr. President, members of the board, and the administrative team, Dr. Anderson, we are so thankful for this recognition, we are truly blessed to work in the public schools. We have a dedicated group of police officers who work very, very hard to take care of the safety and security of our students, staff, faculty, and volunteers, and they regularly work to be ready, responsive to any possible emergency. What I'd like to do is pass the mic down the line, tell them where they work, and how many years of experience, I think you're gonna be very surprised to hear the number of years of law enforcement experience all of our folks have. Captain McCray?
Charlie McCray, 33 years in law enforcement, 25 with Topeka Police Department, and eight with Topeka Public Schools.
My name is Don Kennedy, I work at Topeka West, I have 36 years of experience, 27 of them are on the Topeka Police Department.
Sergeant Kelly Roberts, I have 30 years' experience with the Topeka Public School, oh, with Topeka Police Department, three years with Topeka Public Schools, and I'm currently the, currently the forensic coordinator.
Officer Jacob Outt, Topeka High, just short of eight years, be right in a year here, Topeka Public Schools.
Officer Jack Reynolds, I'm at Topeka West, I have 21 years in the Air Force as Security Forces, five years at Washburn University, and three and a half years at Topeka West with 501.
My name is Jeremy Laidoff, I'm the day shift patrol guy, and I have five years all here with the school.
I'm Eric Luch, I've got about nine years, and I'm at Jardine.
Pedro Altalari, with Topeka High School, four years' experience, one with Emporia, and three here with Topeka, with TPS Police.
My name is Daniel Kelly, and I'm second shift patrol, and I've been in law enforcement for two years.
Jonathan Daly, I'm at Highland Park, and I've been with TPS for about a year and a half.
Louis Cortez, 25 years to Topeka Police Department, just retired, and three months with his cap, at 501 Police, Capital City High, 24 years with Army Reserves.
My name is Mark McEwen, I have 38 years in law enforcement, started out on the Winfield Police Department, retired from the Kansas Highway Patrol, and I'm one of your newest officers.
I'm Teresa Salz, I have 26 years Attorney General's Office, and I'm at Topeka High.
Gary Williams cannot be with us tonight, he just returned from Afghanistan from a tour of duty, and he had a previous commitment, so he wasn't able to be with us. So, as you can see, we have a great deal of experience, and what I like is we have experienced officers who can work well with young people, and understand that young people sometimes make a mistake, and, so we don't immediately need to go to arrest as a result of the Juvenile Justice Bill, I think we've done a very, very good job of working within that bill, and helping to reduce the number of encounters with law enforcement, and making many more of those positive, when we have to, have to deal with a child.
So this is National Police Officer Week, and right now, Topeka Public Schools Board of Education is the safest place you could be in town. Anyone that has served in the military, in any area of the military, or in the reserves, please raise your hand. On behalf of Topeka Public Schools, we honor you, we thank you, it is a privilege to be under your care, when we start talking about 30 years, 30 years, 20 years, leaving the police force, and then choosing to serve our most vulnerable, thank you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna ask our police officers to please stay right there, we're gonna take a five-minute break, where we take photos, board members come on up, anyone that got an award, please stay, I know I said that fast, you all, but that way you don't leave, so we can get photos really quick, and we'll start with our police officers. Well, we've recognized a number of schools this evening, Mr. Kip will be coming forward, he's our general director of assessment and demographics, to share a little bit about some general information based again on preliminary scores, we know that scores at this point will only improve from where they are at this time. Currently, we have middle school through eighth grade preliminary results that we feel comfortable with showing, while the other scores still continue to come in.
Thank you, good evening. I'm kinda gonna get mobile here, if you want to go ahead and get to the next slide. Again, like Dr. Anderson mentioned, this is preliminary, we're gonna start off with ELA, English Language Arts. The blue line is three years ago, 2016, orange is 2017, and preliminarily, 2018 is the green. So if you think of this vertically, this is the movement we're doing in third grade, we're moving up. Fourth grade has a very impressive jump from last year, fifth grade also had a bump, sixth grade as well, seventh grade, we hit the mark of exactly where we were last year, and finally eighth grade had an increase. Now, the overall sloping trend of this, you're gonna see this at every state level, the assessment gets extremely difficult as you move up into middle school and high school. So that's ELA, let's transition to math, and again, you see that kind of sloping, really indicator of the rigor at that point. Third grade, we're up again, fourth grade had another systematic incremental jump. Fifth grade, this, this one really stands out, and, you know, maybe Dr. Anderson might want to speak to this a little bit, sixth grade math had a huge gain, seventh grade as well, and then eighth grade, we hit it right on the mark where we were last year. So, kind of breaking all this down, this, I'm gonna give you the, kind of the 30,000-foot overview, there's so many different ways to look at this data, but I wanted to kind of come to some district conclusions in terms of, not only proficiency, but the new ESASA rules, look at schools who move kids from level one and up, so not only are we getting credit for the level twos and threes, those proficiencies, but also the buildings that move kids out of level one. So 87 percent of our elementary schools had significant movement out of level one in ELA or math, and as we mentioned before, all of them, all the elementaries had increases in ELA or math, and that's, it's incredible, it's unprecedented, really. Middle schools also have movement... Middle schools also have movement out of Level One in ELA or math. And eighty-three percent of our middle schools had increases in ELA and math proficiency. Again, we use Winterskantron as kind of a predictor of how the results were going to pan out. And it's, again, it's maintaining that real strong correlation. So, it helped to have some preliminary numbers before going into the state assessments to kind of gauge tiered intervention for some of those kids. And again, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, tenth grade scores are still being reviewed at this point. But I would like to highlight, if it's okay, a couple of buildings that really kind of hit one out of the park. I don't know if they're still here, maybe. McCarter and McHeckren had, you know, moving the needle maybe three to five percent is really pretty admirable and pretty good. McHeckren had the highest movement of math scores. Sixteen percent increase in their proficiency from last year. McCarter had a nine percent increase in math and a twelve percent increase in ELA. So, it's really encouraging to see at least double-digit movements. And even movement out of Level One. Williams had double-digit increases out of Level One, which is just, we've never seen numbers like this preliminarily, so. Anything you want to add?
Are there questions for Mr. Kip?
Questions? Dr. Mickelson.
So, what do you attribute that increase in those two schools?
Well, we, we do have a number of theories, McHeckren and McCarter, resource.
Adoption. And Mrs. Wallace and I certainly can tag team on this. We pulled all the principals together and talked about what did they all do that's the same systemically. Those two schools in particular piloted Engage New York as the only elementary schools that, with fidelity, piloted that. That is the adoption that you approved for middle school that now for next year will be in elementary. And so, those two schools truly feel like the rigor in math pretty much skyrocketed as a result of that overall. Then, systemically, there are a variety of things that we've put in place, which has led to all of the schools having those, you know, those improvements. I will ask, is Mr. Williams or Ms. Cooney here so that they can speak to that as well? They've already left? Those are two at least big pieces. The other item I'll mention, CI3T and Walk to Intervention, both of those schools have that in place strongly as well. And we do have a McHeckren teacher. Would you like to come up?
Sure.
Mr. Adams?
Mr. Lake.
Mr. Lake, you know, is it Adam Lake?
Alan.
Okay, I was right with the A. A. Lake. And I should know this.
Well, thank you. As Dr. Anderson said, at McHeckren, we did instill and embed it within our curriculum, the Walk to Models. And we found that that really improved the kids that were lacking. What we came to about Christmas time, we noticed though, was the reading intervention mixed with the math intervention, we were missing one part or the other. And so, we looked at our data and first, for instance, third grade, we decided to kind of lay back on the third grade Walk to for reading and really emphasize on the math because we were scared with math. And then, being allowed to pilot Engage New York, we found that at the ending result, when the kids went to state test, we felt very comfortable that they, the rigor, the critical thinking parts, it was there. And a lot of our kids, I have a student in my class who on Scantron was performing at beginning levels. He surpassed on state testing and passed with a three-hundred-twenty score. So, we were really impressed with the results, the preliminary results that did come back. And then, our staff as a whole, we are really buckling down and using data to drive our instruction. And that has really, for some of us, that's newer, you know, it's kind of new to us. But some of our veteran teachers, it was kind of a rough start. But, you know, the questions started happening, and we started linking and connecting as a team and just using that data from kindergarten on. Our last PDE, April twenty-seventh, we actually had the transitional talks that worked. We had a good open discussion, and we know primary, up to intermediate now, you know, what the scope is, what, what we really need to focus on. So, by the time we're in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, you know, those skills, those foundational skills are concrete. So, thank you for allowing us to pilot that, and thank you for the adoption for next year.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Don't go too far. Other questions? Just in case there are other questions for you.
Stay with Dr. Mickelson.
Mr. Kip, the other question was the sixth grade math, how you reverse the downward trend that typically happens as kids progress through the grades. And so, do we have a theory on why that happened?
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
Again, that's that engagement, that's the curriculum adoption that we're talking about now. Ask Ms. Wallace to speak to that.
So, at sixth grade, they piloted Engage New York this year. And sixth grade, they did it with fidelity. They implemented with fidelity. And I think that's part of that really big jump at sixth grade, was it's much more rigorous curriculum and the fidelity and implementation.
And I will just add that, that some preliminary results are indicating some areas, like sixth grade, that particular schools are showing gains at or above the state level. So, this is just unprecedented, I keep saying that word, but it's, we're closing that gap between us and the state in pieces and really collectively each year.
Is proficiency defined as Level Three or Two, is it, or?
There's four levels.
Right.
Three and Four are what the state and we define as proficient, yeah.
Mr., Dr. Mickelson, as a reminder, as we're looking at Three and Four, he mentioned the moving out of Levels One and Two because that for us this year has been significant as well. And we believe that the data consults, the PLCs, the intervention has really moved that. So, as we talk about moving into Three and Four, that Level One and Two movement was pretty dramatic as well.
Very good. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kip, for a great presentation, good news, this is the kind of we like. I, like Dr. Mickelson, was also very impressed with the, the pretty much level performance from fifth to sixth grade, that's that middle school transition, which that tells me because the test, I know, gets so much harder. And you're asking for far more, you know, complex work to be done. The students must be really getting in. There's, there's something really special going on in the classrooms. I'm glad he asked that question. I'd like to learn a little bit more at some point about Engage New York because that's, that's significant. If we can see more of that, then, I mean, I guess the answer is response, I guess, do more of it. Quick question on, I'm specifically curious about our two magnet schools. You mentioned Williams. I also understand Scott has had double-digit gains too. I'm curious about these two schools specifically, just because here we sit here on the, you know, May seventeenth. Very, very famous court case happens on May seventeenth. Part of us gaining our unitary status, you know, with the district court oversight was construction of these two magnet schools that were supposed to draw people from all around the district to attend and strategically placed them on the east side of town. We came up with two themes, and the themes have changed between, you know, nineteen ninety-five and now. But we have two very good, solid themes, and I guess this question is probably more philosophical. You may not have an answer for it. But I'm curious on, you know, if we have any way or any kind of metric, even if it's just anecdotal from educators, whether or not students, we feel like their performance is better in those schools because they are more engaged, because they are able to wrap their minds around, you know, something that's extra in terms of application of what they're learning. Specifically with Scott, you know, I personally believe that, I'm just curious what the educators would say because this is a school that, of course, used to always be the bottom, as you know. And to now have double-digit gains and moving a bunch of kids from Level One to Level, you know, Level One and Two to Three and Four is significant. And I think, in my mind, since you've got, you know, a high number of students whose native, whose first language, their native language is Spanish, you are doing it in an environment that actually affirms and validates their, their native culture, which I think is so very important. It tells them that you matter, so let's go learn. I'm curious on what educators would have to say to that, or if we have any kind of metric or anything that improves that.
Well, I'm sure, you know, some people in the audience that, you know, have more research, research background on the Gomez model, and you know, you well know the research on my lingualism.
Are you insinuating that I'd ask a loaded question for you to give me the answer that I want?
No, 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 no. I would never do that, but.
I'm going to interject two things. And, and one, we'll mention what the gains are at Scott, but both dual-language schools, in fact, all of our dual-language schools, even the middle school, improved this year. And Scott's gain, do you recall, Mr. Kip, the exact gain?
Yes. They had a thirteen percent gain in ELA and a nine percent gain in math. And Witson also had about a five percent gain in ELA and a five percent gain in math.
So, it may be ideal even for those that are under the Gomez-Gomez model because the fidelity piece this year was pretty significant. As you know, Dr. Gomez himself came more times than he's come in the past. He observed classrooms, gave feedback. It may be good to either have our magnet or perhaps our dual-language schools to come back and do a presentation once our scores are final and we can release them by school in particular. That may be another piece. Because the jump, as you have stated, Mr. Woods, is significant particularly for Scott as it relates to all the dual-language schools.
Highest, highest, and that we've ever had, Frank, highest jump that we've ever had.
And they're the longest-standing Gomez-Gomez model school as well. Thank you for mentioning those scores.
Ms. Curt?
I'm not sure we even have the data at this point, but one of the things you said was eighty percent of our schools were children out of Level One. But we could move one child in all of our schools or two, and then we all, eighty percent of our schools, and that isn't a very significant change. So, what, do we have the information now?
Yes, we do.
About, you know, the percentage of kids we had in Level One across the district, and now how many are not in Level One?
Well, just to answer your question, I'll probably use it as an example. We're not talking minor movements, for instance.
I, I assume we weren't, but I.
Right.
I was trying to make it simple.
Okay. Williams, for example, they had a ten percent movement out of Level One for ELA and a sixteen percent movement out of Level One for math kids.
And that translates into how many kids then? And that's, that's what I get down to, is how many kids are we really talking about? Did we move, and how many kids are we still have there?
Well, you figure three through five.
I don't know what they have. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's a school of about six hundred, and three through five are tested, so I'd have to crunch the numbers, but.
Yeah, I mean, it'll, it'll show up when we get the bigger details, or some of you don't have them now.
No, not by student number, just percentage.
Roughly for a four-track school like that, right, we're talking a hundred kids per grade, right?
About, yeah.
So, I mean, that's three hundred kids.
And it's.
Significant.
And it's, it is significant, and particularly when you know that generally, a three percent movement is considered significant. So, when you're saying sixteen percent, much less at a school that size, it is significant. But once the data is finalized, which may not be almost till the fall, then you'll get a full report, even by student. He doesn't have it at this time by student, but we do know in general, this is the initial preliminary information before school's out.
And that, and that's, that is, I mean, I have not, it's just that it, it doesn't really tell you when we really look, get down to kids, how many kids do we still have work to do? And if we only had, you know, ten, ten kids left in Level One, we'd all be jumping up and down.
Right. This evening really is about giving just a preliminary view from what we got in the last two weeks, the overview to say, we're moving, we're trending upwards. The majority of our schools have improved from what we know at this time. And we look forward to bringing back the detailed data when we get the final results.
And I will add that Chase and Eisenhower both had significant movements in math out of Level One, um, ten to eleven percent.
Those are, and those are good signs. I mean, I'm not quibbling at all. It's just, it doesn't, this is, this is a really, real high-level overview.
Exactly.
Absolutely. So, look for more granular detail down the road. Thank you, Mr. Kip. Any other questions for Mr. Kip as he prepares to take his seat?
Any questions? No. Thank you, Mr. Kip.
Under the consent agenda was a proclamation, and we want to read that proclamation while we are going into our presentation for Special Education and Special Education Services. Our staff members from the Speech and Language Department are also here. And we really should have done this with the highlights. However, because we do have Dr. Posney, Dr. Harrington here as well, we'd like to call Dr. Harrington up to help read the proclamation and to introduce her amazing staff members that are here with us this evening. Thank you all for hanging in there as we get to this particular portion of the presentation. Can you introduce their names and where they serve at? And they are amazing individuals, not only for standing and waiting all this time, but also for just doing what you do. And this is our leader's first year here as a, in the leadership role. Can you read the first few sentences and last few sentences of the proclamation after you introduce your staff members? And any information that you want to share within these few minutes?
Sure. I am Elizabeth McKesick. I'm Elizabeth McKesick, and this is my first year as a coordinator for Speech and Language Services. And we have some of our speech pathologists in the back. We have Melissa Holsing, who serves at Stout Elementary. We have Carol Williams, who is at, no, Carol Thomas, who is at Williams. We have Michelle Thingis and Rachel Barker, who are both at State Street. Come one up, come one up, girls. And then, we have Diane Redler, who is at McClure Elementary. Oh, Dana Jones, sorry. Dana Jones, congratulations. So, for our proclamation, we have, whereas school speech pathologists are empowered, are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, whereas school speech pathologists are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents as these traits relate to awareness and development of their future life skills. I'll skip down to the bottom. So, now therefore, it be resolved that the Board of Education of Unified School District Number 501, Topeka, Kansas, does proclaim the month of May, 2018, as National Better Speech and Hearing Month.
Just a little, few little unfacts. We have right now approximately thirteen hundred students that we serve through the IEP process. And I think we have around fourteen thousand students in the district, so it's about eight percent of the students, which, when I looked it up today, runs about our national average, according to our national governing body. Eight percent of the students across the nation tend to have, or have, speech and language communication disorders are in serve, and are served through the public schools. I just found that kind of a little interesting.
All right, can you guys come in the middle for photo back?
And now for the report for Special Education and, and Special Services. I'd like for Dr. Harrington to come back up. She's our general director for Special Education. We have been so fortunate to have tremendous guidance and support from a consultant throughout the year. Dr. Harrington will share a little bit about who this person is. And we're just going to give a very general overview of just Special Education over the course of this semester in terms of the work that's being done aligned with our strategic plan. Dr. Harrington?
Good evening. I have the pleasure of introducing Dr. Alexa Posney tonight. She's currently with Cross and Jofteus and has been serving as a consultant lawyer for me. I first had the opportunity to work with her at KSDE back in 2005. At that point, I don't remember what your title was exactly. As the Deputy Commissioner of Education. And then, from there, she became my professor at KU. And then, she left us and went to Washington DC for OSAT. my professor at KU, and then she left us and went to Washington DC for OSIP. So it's been a long history, and it was good to reconnect with her this year. And so I'll let her tell a little bit about our work together.
Thank you, Dr. Harrington. And I just want to say thank you, Dr. Anderson, and the board members, because you know, and we all know, what you do every day to support kids in these, in the, in your schools is the most important thing you can possibly do, because you're preparing the future. I also want to thank, you know, Dr. Harrington, and I want to thank those of you, the consulting teachers, and thank you, because you gave me the pleasure and privilege of working with you this year, and just know how impressed I am with all of you. What I want to share with you is, I, I want to share the fact that the data is what is so incredibly important when we talk about and what we looked at in terms of what do we really need to do here in this district. So when we look at it, and we look at what was needed to be do, to be done, so that we can ensure that each and every child with, with a disability is receiving what he or she needs to be the most successful that they can be. What we looked at first was really taking a look at the, the staff and the students in terms of just numbers, because the very first thing that we wanted to do is we wanted to improve support for schools, to ensure that there's an effective continuum of services for any child who is in need of special education services. So if you take a look at ten-year trends, ten years ago, in terms of the number of, of students that were students with disabilities here in the district, there were two thousand three hundred and sixty-three. That's approximately twenty percent of the students. In the year 2017, when we take a look at that, there were two thousand eight hundred and eleven students, which is now twenty-one percent of the, the population here in Topeka. And I want you to understand that the federal, the, the national average across the country in terms of identification of students with disabilities is thirteen percent. And then across the state in Kansas, it's thirteen point seven percent. So yes, there are more kids being identified in, in Topeka. And that's an increase of over five hundred students during that period of time. When you take a look at staff, in 2008, there were two hundred and four special education teachers. In 2017, one hundred and ninety-one. So what we have is a decrease of thirteen teachers, while we have an increase of five hundred students with disabilities. Based on taking a look at, you know, when you, when you look at what it is that's needed, we're probably short about thirty-three teachers, just based on, on those numbers alone. Another thing, the second thing that we really took a look at was the effective continuum of services, because students with disabilities, they're across the board. We have some students whose disabilities are mild and moderate. We have some who have more significant needs, and we have kids who have incredibly significant needs. So we can't just look at numbers alone. You also have to take a look at it, what are the needs of those kids? So when we take a look at it, those kids whose disabilities are more mild and moderate, they're, they can be mostly in the regular class. So they are removed less than twenty percent of the time. So in terms of the services needed by special education staff, it's not as much. The next group we have are those who are in resource programs. These are kids who are with resource special ed teachers twenty-one percent to sixty-two percent of the time. They have more significant needs and need more, need more services. And then we have the self-contained students. These are the students who are in special education all the time. These are kids with significant disabilities, and that's sixty-three percent or more of, of the students. So when you take a look just at the sheer numbers, you also have to take a look at, what do these kids need in order to be successful? And that was what we took a look at, and that's why the facts and figures are so, so incredibly important. Another part that we took a look at was expanding access to the general ed curriculum. One of the major goals at the federal level and everywhere else, and I've been in this, yes, I hate to say it, but I've been in this for forty years. I started in this long before the federal law was put in place. But one of the things that we learned over those forty years, years, is that access to the gen ed curriculum, including students with, with disabilities in the regular classroom, has made all the difference in the world in terms of how well they do. And that requires a lot of significant help, because it puts a very much of a burden on, on the gen ed teachers as well. So when we take a look at it, and what you in Topeka have been doing, the school-wide system of supports has been in place, the CI3T, the Comprehensive Integrated Three-Tier System, that they've been working with, and Dr. Raine has been, has been put in place and has been taken off. Now, when we take a look at the long-range plan, we're taking a look at implementing a tiered system of supports. And I want you to understand, this is referred to as MTSS, the Multi-Tiered System of Supports. What I want you to understand is that MTSS started in Kansas. Kansas is, has been, you know, the, the bellwether for these kinds of supports. And what we did in the state of Kansas, because I know you've heard of these terms, what we started with was what's known as RTI, Response Intervention. And yes, what we need is every child, we need to know how well they respond to any intervention we may or may not provide to them. That's RTI. However, that's not enough. There are other pieces that need to be in there. Another part of it is what we refer to as PBIS. Now, when we talk about the behavioral intervention services that are also needed, and the social and affective portion of it. Another part of it is LRE, the Least Restrictive Environment. We need to have kids in the gen ed classrooms so they are exposed to the same curriculum and held to the same standards as everyone else. And underlining all of this, and what I refer to as an undergirding of all of this, is what's known as UDL, the Universal Design for Learning, and the other part of it is EIS, the Early Intervening Services. What I want you to understand is universal design for learning means that teachers know and present their information as they teach. They present it in multiple ways, so the kids who tend to learn better visually, or they learn better auditorily, or the ones, the kids who are hands-on, they present it in the multimodal method of teaching, so that every child, no matter how they learn, can be successful. In the reverse is that the kids are allowed to then show what they know in whatever is their most effective way to do that. This is what we put in place in Kansas. MTSS includes every single part of those systems, and it's incredibly important. Some of the actions that we put into place is, one, providing high-quality school-based professional development focused on student needs and services. In 2017 alone, thirty online professional development modules were accessed. Two hundred professional development programs were attended by staff across the district. And in, in 2017, three days of district-level professional development were attended by all special ed staff across the, the district, targeting student needs and services. Another important and incredibly important, just as you've seen all the data, is that we need to provide accurate and timely data to the Kansas State Department of Education. What happened over the course of the year is that we met monthly with the district data team. They met, we met with KSDE for two in-depth IEP trainings. They met with MIS data people several times throughout the year, targeting verification and enhancing the accuracy of the data, and using the data to make sure that it really applies to what the kids need to have in order to learn successfully. And the last one is improving the use of data and tiered services to improve outcomes for all students. This means we have to have a concerted effort to reviewing student performance data, student outcome data. And one of the most important pieces, and what Dr. Harrington is going to talk about, is why the role of the consulting teachers is so incredibly important, because one of the things that we know, need, and, and what we know based upon the needs assessment that Cross and Joftis did in 2016, is that the schools and the teachers and everyone else needs to have the support right at that moment in, in terms of what's happening. One of the greatest needs, and it's not just here in Topeka, are the behavioral issues of kids, because we have to ensure that kids are, are safe and that kids are well taken care of on, on every part of the, the continuum. So we know that we have to continue to take a look at this, this data and know that having the consulting teachers, having dedicated schools to which they are, but also having the, the time to be able to provide the level of support that's needed. If they have too many schools, and if they have one school that's on the north side of town and another one that's on the south, they need to have more continuous schools. We also know that we learned over the course of time that we need to have consulting teachers, each have their own level of expertise. If there's a behavioral issue, if there's something about, you know, speech language or whatever it is, each one of the consulting teachers now is going to have one specific area of, of expertise, which they can be called upon in order to do it. By putting these in place, and what Dr. Harrington is going to, you know, share with you in terms of, of what they're looking at for next year, this is why we hope and we, we will continue to provide the level of service that schools need, so that kids and teachers and schools and principals and so forth know that their needs are being met. So.
Are there questions for Dr. Posney, as she's kind of shared a little bit of overall what some findings are? And then with that, know that we're preparing to go into the first year of looking at how to continue this implementation. So we'll be coming back to you with more detailed data, but we wanted you to hear from her today while she is also in town.
Mr. Woods? Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Thank you, Dr. Posney. First of all, it's great to have you back in the state.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
You know, we all do owe you a very, a great debt, a great, a great debt. You talked about MTSS starting here. I think you should probably be fully transparent with everybody that you were the leader who kind of walked the state through implementing that, when you were the Commissioner of Education. And actually, before that, it was when you were Deputy Commissioner, right?
Deputy, yes.
Yeah. So then later we're Commissioner, and then later.
I know. I, I can't keep track of the jobs.
Yeah. So the one question I have, I guess, really is, is maybe, you probably don't know the answer to it right now, but I'm curious to see if we'll find it as we launch into this new work in special education throughout the year. The numbers that you shared initially, you know, I know this anecdotal, I mean, we all know this intuitively, but to hear the numbers, twenty percent in 2008 of our students, twenty-one percent this year, when the national average is thirteen percent, that's significantly higher in terms of identification. I'm curious if we have any, I have heard all of the urban legends why we would have the, you know, higher identification of special education in Topeka public schools. I'm curious if we have any data or any concrete history, any evidence where we can show why that would be and what is special about us.
Okay. The, you know, the data, when you take a look at it, and, you know, I've looked at the data from all over the place, and yes, urban areas tend to have a higher identification rate. You don't have as high an identification rate as often you find in Massachusetts. Now, you know, you would think, well, why Massachusetts? Their identification rate can go up into the thirty and thirty-three percent, okay, in, in terms of who they identify. What makes a difference is the, what, what is the eligibility criteria? And that is, that differs not only across the fifty different states, it differs in some states across every single school district, okay? And I've worked in a number of different states. Okay, so I know the system in Kansas. We know the eligibility criteria is here. I honestly believe that you are identifying the right kids. In fact, the survey that Cross and Joftis came up with, the response from a lot of the principals and so forth are saying that they're not identifying enough, that there are still more that appear to, you know, to have that. It's one of the reasons in MTSS, we put EIS, the Early Intervening Services, because I have gone and I've spoken across the country, and people just kind of look at me. I honestly believe we over-identify kids with a learning disability. And why it is, it's because of the level of poverty. Kids who are in poverty come into the kindergarten school door manually, without even knowing how to hold a book.
Yep.
Okay? And because, in, in some cases, the eligibility for special ed, they have to fail so long that often it takes until third and fourth grade until they're identified. And, and they don't need to be. Some of them are really and truly not learning disabled, but it's because they are so far behind when they walk in that school door, they look like they are. That's why EIS is so incredibly important. If we could catch them, and, and I, you know, I'm proud of Kansas, you know, with the Four-Year-Old at Risk program. That, that is an incredibly helpful program. Some states, though, and, and, you know, we have the third, we really need to start with the kids much earlier. So, I mean, that's one. But you're also serving the kids who really need, you know, what it is. And, and remember, there are some states where, you know, a child, when I worked in Illinois, you worked with, you know, different cooperative units that were in there. I worked for the Southwest County Cooperative. And the, the difference, we had our own eligibility criteria in our, our co-op, and the co-op that was right next to us had a different criteria in terms of who was eligible. So a child could be identified in one place and then receive services in another one not. That is something, in terms of the field of special ed, we've been working on for decades, to really help establish what is and who really is a child in need of special services. So it's, it's not just Topeka, okay? It's, it's across the board. And, you know, I, I don't believe that you are misidentifying kids other than the kids who don't have, the other thing is, is I would really like to be able to see that there's, there are dollars that could be spent to help these kids who walk in the school door so far behind, so that they would not have to be identified as in need of special ed. And, and that's tremendously important.
That's your early childhood investment.
That's, that's the early intervening services. That's exactly what I'm talking about. And that's why response to intervention is so, you know, important, because if the kids begin to respond, then we know they don't have a disability, it's just that they have never been exposed to it. Okay?
I really appreciate your answer. I mean, that certainly obviously makes me feel better. I know we do a good job here.
Oh, absolutely.
I'm biased, probably. So it's great to hear it from the expert we bring in to take a look at these things. I'll definitely be interested in seeing, I guess, along that line, you know, questioning how we're doing as we go, go back the layers of the Indian even further in the year to come. So thank you very much for your work, and Dr. Harrington, thank you.
And Dr. Posney will continue to answer questions, and Dr. Harrington will be coming back again at a later time to go in more depth about what that year one looks like. I know Reverend Williams and several others had questions as well, or maybe you didn't. Are there other questions for Dr. Posney?
I have a, a couple. One, I, I think you told us that we don't have enough special ed teachers.
Yes.
And, very simple, is, is that not just in Topeka, but is that nationwide?
Nationwide. Okay. And, and it's going to become more and more of a problem. You know, you always hear about the shortage of math and science teachers. The, the greatest shortage in this country is special education teachers. And, and that's, that creates even more of a problem, because we don't have enough that are coming out in the first place. And yes, we need an incredible amount. We, we need so many more. And, and special ed is not something, you know, it's, it's not something that general education, general educators necessarily receive. Often, they have one course that they have through their program where they learn the disability of the week. So, you know, we have to have the, the people who really understand the disabilities, and I always refer to it, and they know the bag of tricks that works with kids with, with different needs and different types of interventions and what works. So, you know, just having some teachers who are not certified, and it really creates more issues as well. And it's a challenge for the general education teachers, too, because, you know, they learn differently, they need different things, they need, it's, it would be great if we could have a, a resource special ed teacher to be able to work with every gen ed teacher. I mean, that would be the ideal. When a student taught, one of my favorite things, it was a middle school, and what, what they did is they had three gen ed teachers who taught all of the, the middle school kids at, at the school that a student taught at. And then there was an assigned special ed teacher to all three, who then was there as a resource for every single one of the, the eighty-five-plus kids who were in that classroom.
And my second question has, really has to do with what you just said. And that is, and I've been asked this, if we, if we do an inclusive philosophy.
Yes.
Does that take away from the gen ed kids?
Oh, we've been asked that question for years.
Me too, yeah.
Yeah. We've been asked for years, and, and my, my first response always is no. And yet, the reality of it is, there, you only have so much time. And, you know, when you have to, it, the, the classroom size makes a big difference. If you have twelve to fifteen kids, you know, within a classroom, it, it's doable. When you get up into the twenty-five and twenty-eight and so forth, it's, it's an incredible burden. And yet, yet, when teachers have it, and this is why I would love to see gen ed, when I went through my program, there wasn't, we didn't have a, a classroom with gen ed teachers whatsoever, nor did gen ed, gen ed teachers ever have anything with special ed. If all the teachers knew the, the different techniques, the different tools, the different interventions, the different ways of working with different kids, I, I do believe it could be a whole lot better. And inclusion is relatively new. It's still not something that's been there. If it would have been something that had been done all along, I think there would have been more learning much faster, even though we're seeing much more inclusion. But by leaving kids
But by leaving kids out of the general ed curriculum, we are not leading them to what they need to have. So, no, I sincerely hope we're not doing, you know, damage or harm to the gen ed students, but, you know, we have to be realistic, too.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
So what you can expect moving forward, both Ms. Sharp and Dr. Harrington are working on a service delivery model that integrates, that continues to build on what we've done this year, and that ensures that staffing is deployed in a manner that's within the recommendation of what Dr. Pozney just shared. And so at that time, we'll be coming back as we're preparing for the 2018-19 year, sharing what that model looks like. But now you have a little bit of the background, and you also know the work that Dr. Pozney has been doing, and we may be asking for that consulting guidance moving forward as we have with Dr. Gomez. It has been quite valuable thus far. Thank you both for presenting this evening.
We have one action item, and that's U.S. History Change to align with the new K-BOR requirements.
Yes, we had, this is a discussion in the Super Finals Report a few meetings ago. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer those before you both.
Can you remind the audience and the board what this is and why we are presenting this?
Yes. So we are asking for some revisions to our U.S. History courses to align to the Board of Regents coursework. This will allow students to get concurrent credit. We have had concurrent credit over the last several years, but Washburn University has asked us to please align our coursework with their historical periods.
Any discussion about this?
Just so I, I'm reading the attached document, right? Can you explain to me, I guess, what exactly, I think we, from what I remember, we were changing this to reduce the number of years that we had swatched in.
So...
Three semesters to two, right?
Correct. Advanced Placement, that is a requirement of the College Board to go from 1492 to the current. Washburn requires the two benchmark semesters be from 1600 to 1877 and 1870 to the current. And both Advanced Placement and U.S. History for concurrent credit would get college credit. And then U.S. History would not necessarily meet the needs for concurrent credit, but it would be for regular U.S. History, high school U.S. History.
So a quick question, I may, so the AP U.S. History, is that, do those students get college credit through the AP exam, or do they get it through concurrent enrollment or either or?
Either or.
So there'll be, there'll be an AP U.S. History class with a teacher, there'll be a U.S. History 1C class or concurrent enrollment, essentially covers the same time period. I mean, other than...
We cut about 200, 300 years off.
We don't have much history documentation to begin with, but, yeah.
So, yeah, I get it. I mean, 1492, you've got the spanners, and the Americas, and the States. I'm just curious, so on our U.S. History Regular One, what is written here is what's proposed, right?
Correct.
So we would actually start in 1800. So we have the crafting of the Constitution, we'd miss the Revolution itself, or the beginning. But we're assuming that they've already had that in other courses.
Yes, in eighth grades. And it was, felt that if a student wasn't ready for concurrent credit or for Advanced Placement, that this allowed more time devoted. You're packing in less years of history.
Less years, yeah.
And as we remind our board members, this is a requirement if we're going to continue to offer the credit, which is why we are making, taking this step at this time. This step was delayed previously, but at this time, this is the last board meeting in which we can take this step so that we can continue to offer the credit, which is why we ask for the action.
And I'm good with it. I'm, I wanted to make sure I understood. So specifically for our Advanced Placement and our concurrent enrollments, those time periods have to be there to match up with what they need. We have our choice in the U.S. History One and Two, but we still understand that our students are going, they're going to study and learn about the antecedents to the Revolution in eighth grade, 1800, the revolutions. They're going to learn about the crafting of the Constitution and go forward from there. And since it's fewer years, we believe they'll be ready at that point if they wanted to come back and take Advanced Placement.
Yes.
So we foresee U.S. History One as primarily, and One and Two primarily ninth grade courses, I think.
They, well, they're, well, they're not taken, you don't take both, you take one or the other, any of these three options. So they still would be taken their junior year.
Okay.
World History covers a lot of the early time period as well as fifth and eighth grade social studies.
So there's no way you could decide you wanted to take U.S. History One and then come back later and take the Advanced Placement? If you had enough runway in your schedule?
If you had enough room in your schedule, you could come back as a senior and take A push.
That was my question.
It does seem like, though, that your students who are going to take A push are the same students who are going to take your concurrent credit history class. And I realize maybe you're just trying to compromise to, I realize we're forced, our hands are forced a little bit, but I'm just, I think those students are going to be the same students. It'll be interesting how they, which one they choose, I suppose, but it seems a little redundant.
And one of the reasons why we want to certainly continue to offer AP, and let me, before I say anything, Mrs. Wallace, would you like to speak to anything about why we would be offering both AP and concurrent? I have one item to share, but would you like to start?
Well, I think, you know, as a high school graduate, and having an Advanced Placement course on your transcript is something that we want to promote. Also, looking at the opportunity for some of our students who don't have the means to pay tuition, they can take the AP exam and get college credit.
The other item is, in order to rank nationally, which at this time, our schools aren't ranking nationally in U.S. News as the best high schools, which several Kansas schools are ranked, the only way to rank is to offer AP courses in a, in a particular quantity of those courses. So we certainly want to offer that opportunity. If students don't take the course, we can always close that, but right now, we do have some students that select AP over concurrent credit.
Two things. Just, the concurrent credit, are there total classes that have been taken through Washburn, right?
Concurrent credit classes are taken on our campuses with highly qualified CPS teachers through Washburn University.
Right. But the credit, the university credit comes from Washburn.
Correct.
Okay. What does it cost a student to take U.S. History, the one, the very first one? What's it cost?
Well, I know that it's half tuition, and I can tell you that two years ago, it was about $350 to take a concurrent one semester.
One semester, so it's $350.
For a class. Yeah, for three credit. And so if you're taking, if you're taking both semesters, that's six credits.
So a one-credit class, it's, I mean, it's three, three university credits, right?
Correct.
And it's $350 of credit?
Approximately.
A class.
Yes, thank you. Sorry.
If they were going to a traditional undergraduate student, they're already paying a lot more than they're paying.
Right. Okay.
And that is 50% tuition.
Yeah.
Okay. Then the other thing is, what does it take to take the, cost to then take the AP class?
It's about $80 to take the AP.
$80, okay. Thank you.
Dr. Mickelson.
Just, I was going to save this for board member comments, but we're on this topic. I still question, I don't diminish the fact that concurrent credit is good for our students. It's a cheaper way to get college credit. What I do argue against is that Washburn University does absolutely nothing to earn the money that we're giving them, other than hire somebody to take our money and manage the transcript. Our teachers are teaching the class, our teachers are administering the exams and the homework and the grades, and I just, it's a money grab. And by our students have that opportunity, and it does, as a parent of a child who took advantage of it, it does allow these students in their college years to have a little bit more flexibility, but I think we need to ask more from Washburn than we're getting.
We agree. And we have started that conversation, actually partially last year, both Dr. Duncan and myself, and I believe Mr. Robbins as well, has had conversations with Washburn, because we do agree that we should be having a continued partnership in reducing what that tuition is and having other models. And those conversations are still underway. In fact, within the last, I believe, month or so, Mr. Robbins has had a continued meeting with Washburn. So we are having those conversations, and we agree. Thank you for pointing that out.
And do we, we ought to look at some of the community colleges, what they would charge for the same, for the same thing.
Required by law.
I know, but Washburn, sometimes you can talk mildly.
So we do ask for the board, if you could support us with the action for the history proposal.
So I think we're ready to take a motion.
I move that the, that the U.S. History Change is aligned with the new Board of Regents requirements as presented, action item 20.1. I would move favorably for passage.
Do we have a second? We have a second? And a motion? Do we have any further discussion? So we're ready to vote?
Motion here.
Ready for board comments. Reverend Williams. Dr. Mickelson.
Very briefly, one of the highlights of the service is watching Hope Street Academy students graduate, or being just a few feet away from them and watching their expressions and efforts that they, we know they had to go through in order to reach that point in their life, and it was just a fun day today to watch that. So thank you for allowing me to participate.
Ms. Johnson.
And I think of what I like about this time of year is that we have that abundant. So we had the opportunity to go to Harlem Park last week and watch the building ceremony there, and watch them embark on their next lady there, well, just as a, an opportunity to prepare for their embarkment on Saturday. Dr. Perry did an excellent job of that as well, and definitely appreciated the opportunity at home. And then we are saw the stores as well, we're at the unveiling at the Capitol, the progress of the board of reals is there. So it's just all these awesome opportunities that we're getting along with the God, the universe, the office, the concerts, and bar concerts, very happy to take them. And we're spending the entire day with these, uh...
Mr. Wood.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, as Ms. Johnson mentioned, I got a chance, of course, first of all, I guess I absolutely feel the exact same way, get over everything you heard on Hope Street, their commencement ceremony today. I mean, it's wonderful to hear the students and to hear their plans, and it kind of starts to remind you of why we call it, why this is commencement. It's really not the end, it's really just the beginning of their journey. What we do is prepare them to go out, give them ammunition to go out and accomplish their goals. It's really inspiring, so I appreciate everything that you all do, and always look enviously on educators when I think about the impact that you get to have on young people. I got a chance to go to the Capitol, to the unveiling of the Brown versus Board of Education mural. Ms. Johnson and I were there. It was pretty phenomenal, pretty amazing to think about the fact, you know, I, Ms. Johnson and I are standing there, and we're sitting right next to our legislators, and we're watching them discuss this, pull the veil off of the mural, celebrating this court case that was like the most controversial thing ever, that no one would go near within the pole in many of those public offices in the 1950s when they made this decision. So as a direct beneficiary, you know, of that, it's not just the decision, but the efforts of a lot of people who, you know, might have just left feeling really grateful and excited about life. And now I get to wrap it up with going to a marathon day of graduations and go to my own fifth grade promotion next week, which still seems unreal to me, but...
Ms. Kirk.
And I think for all of us, the Hope Street graduation is, it's very special because it's so intimate, and you know that every child there had a huge struggle just to get where they are, and that somehow we weren't helping them so effectively in so our larger schools. So to go to Hope Street and have that close relationship with teachers and counselors and the principal made such a huge difference for these kids. Not all of our children are that fortunate, have that small setting. We know that the caring teacher, whether it's elementary school or middle school, is a key for children to be successful, but some of our kids fall through those cracks. And to see those that have made it, and I had, I had someone from one of the other high schools who was part of helping kids get referred to Hope Street, was there for the graduation, and he turned to me and said, "Those children would never have graduated had they stayed at Harlem Park." Not because Harlem Park is bad, but because it just didn't meet the needs of these particular 13 kids. I think there were 13 of them. And it's amazing, just with that little bit of space and what they do with those kids. They're successful with everybody, they have no claim to that, but it is, it is, I think that's what makes it so special for all of us, is that personal connection that the kids have with everything that goes on at school. Anyway, that's all.
One thing I think we need to do is congratulate our administrators at the district level for instituting the things that have made the success of the schools that we recognize tonight. So thank you guys very much. And the other thing I'd like to do is thank Larry Robbins for getting air conditioning in the Hope Street.
You know, I almost didn't feel right. It didn't, it felt unnatural that I wasn't lightheaded by the end of the ceremony. I was wondering.
Those of you who have not been there, who were never there when, the last, how many years, 18 years that they've been having that graduation, have no idea how bad it was in that, in that gym.
Wearing a graduation.
We all lost weight every time we went.
Yeah, I left the gym with a dry shirt. Anything else? Anybody? Yes, okay, I'll accept a motion for adjournment. Ms. Kirk moves, and Mr. Wood seconds. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote?
All is open.
All four? All opposed?